Thank you, Mr. President. And this is the Council. Good evening. Thank you so much for taking the special meeting today on this important matter. I'd like to thank you so much, Mr. President, for looking at the ordinance as I think my presentation makes more sense. But as we present this, and we have several people here that'll come up and give some presentations in a few moments, it's all right. As we do that, we'll basically be covering the matters that would be considered substantive information as to both of those issues, if that's all right. So, very quickly, I don't want to take a lot of time out of the folks that are going to be speaking behind me, but I did want to just point out a few or three things. This request for this water rate will end up being an increase, of course, is to make sure that we have enough water for today and for our future, and that the water is safe, and that it's clean, and it's usable, and it helps foster business and growth in the community, and it takes care of some environmental concerns that both we had and also the federal and state government has as well. We have set this up for two things: to try to save money for rate payers. One is that this rate ordinance is basically asking that this be set up and be phased in over a period, what, maybe five years, to be okay from you folks to move forward, will allow us to take this case down to the Indiana Regulatory Commission, where they will actually hear a full case with the testimony and recognition, not only from us but any other interested groups, pretty good ones that want to present a case, and also for your knowledge and for the knowledge of the public, that at a case at that level, there will also be a state agency there as part of the consumer protections. They'll make sure that these rate requests are fair to the customers that we serve. So, there'll get a lot of protections going on. The first amount of rate increase will not actually begin until about a year from now, so approximately October, mid-October, to November of next year, will be the first time that this would phase in. And if the rate structure that you're suggesting were to be followed, it would be a little bit less than after the first. Phase in October, another kick in in January, and after that takes place, it will all total a little less than $7 a month extra. That would put us in a position to be able to start bringing in funds that we need for operations. And then every year after that, for the next three years, there would be increases that would be able to be present to be able to allow us to bond against that for major infrastructure improvements that we need to make. And the folks behind you will talk about what they individually here in a few minutes, and what the cost might be, and also what those would look like. We have also, in order to hold down rates, we have received permission from the Development Commission to put $19 million, TIF dollars, into this, as well as from the Council itself previously had approved $9 million from the ARPA dollars that'll also go towards this. So, those two dollars added up are about $28.5 million or so, and that will allow us to do really what will be the first phase, if you will, of infrastructure improvements that we'll be making. And then I'll have Neil talk a little bit more about that in a little bit. But the biggest portion of that will go towards the expansion of our new plant out in Lafayette Township area, where Lafayette Pioneers, and it will allow us to expand to give an increase that could be $4 million extra a day, and went from $10 million to $14 million. And it would also be dollars available to be able to connect new wells located and finish those out, and then move that water from the wellfields into the plant, and then also move that water from the plant down into the city to be able to be used. All of that will be paid for through the ARPA and the TIF dollars, which obviously means that we'll not go on to the customers in terms of rates. It is important to understand that the water utility operates, except for what I just said about ARPA and TIF, normally it operates with 100 percent of its funding coming from customers. It's not property PACs supported in any way. It's all driven by the rates. And as I explained earlier, we, of course, are governed by the Indiana Regulatory Commission. It's an expensive process that we have to go through to do this, because as the folks behind me will explain a little bit, they had to basically do an in-depth study on all the costs associated with our water system and the delivery of water, and then also what it would cost to upgrade the things that would be upgraded. And they've done all that, but that puts a cost to us to do that. And they can do the snapshot that basically covers a 12-month period of time, and then so we use that 12-month period of time to base the future rates on. And that's the way the Regulatory Commission requires us to do it. The unfortunate part of that is we're always going to be a little bit behind, because by the time this actually gets heard by the Regulatory Commission, by the time they make the decision, again, a year out from now, things will have already started to change financially. And so, we try to anticipate that as much as we can, but the regulatory folks who are on that has taken into account so many of those contingencies, because they want it to be based upon certainty, which is why they haven't do this, when you're look back that we're in. We are really in dire straits right now. This is something that needs to be done. It's nothing that any political body necessarily wants to do, but the reality is that since we do own the utility, we owe it to our customers to make sure that they have good drinking water, and we've got clean water, in order to allow us to grow. Again, there's several people here that'll be speaking these things. We have extra people as well that can add to any questions that you might have, everything. So, we're in this here, and talk a little bit about our financial situation right now. As I think you know, this is the re-oate again. We're at a place right now where our water utility is spending more annually than we're taking in. So, obviously, that can't continue too long. Just to remind everybody, we've only had a couple of rate increases in the last 25 years. The last one that came into place actually phased in beginning in 2015, and then 2016. Most everybody recognizes that that wasn't really sufficient anyway. We have utilized those funds since that time that did come in, did do several projects, and since 2016 to the current time, for example, and that we'll talk a little bit about this later, but it's better, it's right under $23 million since that period of time, doing several of the infrastructure changes that we've been making. So, with all that said, I'm just going to step aside and go ahead and have Neil McKee come up. Now, Neil, as you know, is the Director of our Water Utility. We're very fortunate to have Neil. He's been with us in this capacity for nine years, almost. Prior to that, he was a, worked with Indiana American Water Utility, and he was there for several years, and had a lot of experience both in the public side as well as the private side. And he certainly can let you know that if this were ever going to the hands of private ownership or any of the public ownership, the rates would be certainly much higher. Right now, Anderson is out 39 communities, or 25,000 folks or more. We sat at 31st at the lowest. That means there weren't eight of those 39 communities that are lower than us, and there's 30 higher than we are. And this thing all gets phased in over the five years, assuming that the other communities don't make any changes, which would not be a good assumption, because they will, they'll have to reserve as well. But if it stayed the same, we would be more in the middle of the pack, around 15th instead of 31st, and we'd still be well below the higher marks. And those higher marks, by the way, are all through private utilities, like American Water, or like, let's say, Citizens and so forth. So, it's much more cost-effective for us to own and run the utility, but it's also important to be able to do that, but we have to maintain it and stay on top of it over the years, and not let it slide back like it has over these last many years. So, with all that said, I'm going to have Neil McKee come on up. And Neil is behind me, so I'm not behind you. Okay, that's all right. Come on up.
All right. The Mayor, the Council, for time. I'll try to stretch this. We don't have a corner tonight, so I'll try to stretch this. We're going to have to go back and forth.
Can you get up to the mic a little bit? I think they have someone hearing back in the back.
They're in here, too. Can't hear. Talk loud. Talk loud. Barely hear. You can't hear y'all.
Okay. All right. So, my part of the presentation, like the Mayor says, is going to be to give you an overview of our current conditions in the Water Department. You're going to see, I'm going to start at the beginning, source water, because it just makes sense. I can flow through in kind of how we get the water, how we treat it, and how we distribute it, and the challenges in each one of those categories. Our drinking water, we have 17 wells. It's a combination of groundwater and groundwater under the influence of surface water. And I'll talk a little bit about that a little bit later in my part of the presentation. But for now, just you'll stick to the actual source water. Eight of those wells have lost as much as 70 percent of their capacity. Now, we do have a cleaning program. Length of the life of those wells, just for your information, a well has a life of about four years. So, most of our wells are 50-plus years old. So, they've outlived their life. Once you get to a certain point, it doesn't matter what kind of cleaning you do, doesn't matter what kind of maintenance you do, just because of the age alone, the column piping is corroded, the screens are corroded, so it's just, you cannot get that capacity back that you got from the original drilling. So, the next statement is true. It's not feasible to go in and try to clean them and get back the capacity you had, because you're just going to waste money doing that. One of the challenges we have now is locating and developing new sources of supply. It's critical. It takes time. It takes a lot of funding. You have to have proper owners that are willing to let you on the property so that you can do the drilling. They have to be willing to sell part of their property or all their property, depending on how much water you need, how many wells you want to put on it. And then it has to have the proper formation, sandy gravel. It has to have depth of sandy gravel. And it has to be able to be a high-capacity well, so we're talking 1,000 gallons a minute, 1,500 a minute, all the way up to 2,000 a minute. This is our oldest well, the Norton Well. This is in the Wheeler Well Field downtown. This is our fifth leak on this in the past two years. You can see on the right-hand side is a piece of, which is what really caused this leak, is a piece of four-inch line that comes out of those wells and then onto the raw water main in this area. You see, that's a four-inch main over there, but it's really about a two-inch opening. So, what really caused this last leak, which we have not, we have repaired it, but we have not turned it back on yet, because we know that the rest of that raw water main is, looks like this. So, we don't want to cause another issue right now. But these wells only do about 200 gallons a minute, and so, you know, it becomes a cost-benefit conversation, you know? Are we going to do that for 100 to 200 gallons a minute, or are we going to replace, you know, 500 feet of raw water main to get just, you know, 100 gallons a minute? Okay? Is that a little bit?
Yeah, if you talk up a little bit. They can't hear.
Okay. So, I just took a video of that, so you can see the effect that it has. That's on the walking trail there, along the White River. The next piece of the source water I'm going to talk about is our rainy wells. And these rainy wells are about 70 years old, 70-plus years old. I'll talk a little bit about part of our system that blended in its groundwater and the influence of surface water. The rainy wells are the ones that are designated as groundwater under the influence of surface water. And the reason is, you can see in this one photo right here, and here over there, that right there is, this is behind Frishe's Big Boy, so that right there is killed by a creek that comes into White River. This one here is on Grand Avenue on the south side of the White River, and it's within about 40 feet of the river. So, just by proximity, the Department of Water Management has said that these wells are under the influence of surface water. It kind of makes sense, because of the type of well it is, and it could be influenced by surface water. So, we have to actually treat our water differently from the way they're planned. But it's not just at the Wheeler Avenue Well Field. This is one from our Lafayette Well Field. This is our texture well up on 700. It's drilled in 1968. As I talked about earlier, about losing capacity, this one started out at 900 gallons a minute. Now, we can only get about 125 gallons a minute from it. Like I said before, we've used it when we actually had to have it to help, you know, keep the towers full. But at 125 gallons a minute, you're wasting a lot of power. It takes a lot of power to run these wells, and it just doesn't make financial sense to do it, if you can keep running. Now, I'll move into the treatment plant part of it. The one I want to focus on is the Wheeler Plant, because it is the one that now, because we have replaced the Lafayette Plant in 2019, this one is the oldest plant that we have. It's 70-plus years old, 75-plus years old. Its original design was 9.7 MGE, and just due to its age and operational limitations, it's now rated at about 4.5 million gallons a day. And just for your information, and everyone's information, we average about 10.5 million gallons a day between the two plants. We have a max day of 13.1 million gallons a day, and our total capacity is 14 million gallons a day. Now, the reason those numbers are important, the real important one is the 13.1, because that's the number that IDM uses as your firm capacity, what you can, is in a calculation for your firm capacity, to extend water main to get to service for anything, like a residential subdivision, commercial, industrial. So, if you exceed 80 percent of your firm capacity, they won't allow you to connect. And so, we were extremely close to that about a year ago, when Starbucks wanted to tie on. Our water main was short 100 feet. Took a 100-foot section to tie on. We did a notice of intent to IDM. They turned it down, because we were at, right at the 80 percent of our firm capacity. So, we happened to be drilling a replacement well at the time. So, I talked to IDM. IDM, you know, we were close enough to getting that one open and running, and so they allowed us to add that to the calculations, so we got by, just barely got by. So, I say that just to give an idea of how close we're cutting everything on our capacity. So, the plant itself, again, is identified as groundwater under the influence of surface water. This requires 24/7 operations. All of our operators have to be certified WT5, which is the highest certification in the state. So, the cost of operation at the Wheeler Plant, not only is it an old plant, but we're paying a lot to operate it. It requires different treatment, physical treatment, air strippers to take out contaminations like DOC, volatile organic compounds, which we've known we've had in that well field for many years. It does a great job of doing it, but you have, that's added treatment which wouldn't normally have. One of the things that we just realized in the last year, or two years, is we also tested HI for what's called forever chemicals. You've seen that in the news, PFOS, PFOS. It's a very long chemical name for both of those, but what it boils down to is, those contaminants, for us, it's like Teflon on skillets, fire foam used by fires. Those are the two most common ones that you'll see. But we have tested above the action level in four of our wells at the Wheeler Plant. So, we're going to be required in the next five years to either treat for those or move equipment out of plant. So, obviously, I've been telling you over and over again, you know, we're 75-plus years old. Doesn't make sense to retrofit, you know, a 75-year-old plant with a couple million dollars treatment, when really you could just, we could just move out of there anyway, and get new sources of supply, retrieve a plant, so that we can have safe, clean water for another 40 or 50 years. This is a shot of the interior piping, both the filter inflow and effluent. You see, it's hard to see, but the darker areas are corrosion on those pipes. I say it all the time, because, yes, when I came in 2016, it looked as good as this. I mean, so, they have done a great job of keeping it in good condition, the best condition you could, but eventually it just, it's going to fail, because it's just, because of the age. So, on the right-hand side there at the bottom, that's the filter wall, interior filter wall. So, you can see we have leaks on the interior filter wall, it's concrete. We patch them, but because of its age, the concrete is soft, so it's harder for that patch to stick and stay. So, we're doing that more frequently as it gets older, have to go in and repatch it and do it all over again. This is a shot of the exterior filter walls, a little bit worse. Same thing, though. You can see the outline of where the patching is done, especially in the bottom right corner, where it's been done, you know, many times, either horizontal or vertical. So, it's just something we're used to do. It's just an older plant, and we're just constantly doing it. In the distribution system, we average about 104 main breaks a year, about 245 service line leaks a year. Our water loss from apparent losses is 34 percent, and across the city, about $440,000 a year in operating costs. And most of those operating costs are in chemicals and power, but it's still a large amount. The infrastructure, again, passage is used for life, it's kind of a common theme. Sorry. Too fast. This is a piece of eight-inch main that we pulled out not too long ago and replaced. This, again, because of the turpulation and corrosion and the age, it's just about a four-inch hole. So, we see this a lot in smaller mains like that. You know, when you see on Facebook and other social media that we have, you know, discolored water in neighborhoods, usually it's due to we've had a main break somewhere in that area. If it's a larger main break, it can even affect four or five blocks away from it. So, even though it wasn't near it, it's because you dropped the pressure in the water main because of the break by four or five pounds, you know, all the magnesium and iron that's kind of built up in there just slips off. And so, we end up having to go in, flush the area. But when you flush the area, you're dropping the water pressure in bigger areas of the city. So, it's kind of a battle that you run, just trying to stay ahead of it. So, sometimes it takes time to clear everything up. This is one of our biggest culprits here. This is a two-inch galvanized main. We have about 10 percent of our system is two-inch galvanized or black pipe. These holes either can be from corrosion or dissimilar metals, where they're close to another metal that causes this. It can also be corrosive soils that it's in, that can cause it. But regardless, we see this quite often. We'll go in and open up a hole, and it's been leaking. We'll get it open, and there'll be four or five of these repair bands on there, where you just, every time you put one on, the pressure transfers to another weak spot, hits it. Sometimes, just recently, at Fifth and Jackson, we, three times, you put it on, they fill it in, this morning, it's leaking again. You have to go back in and do it again. And so, it's just another battle that we fight with this aging infrastructure. I like to share this one to the people, because this is really a testament to the guys that do this work, some in this room tonight, that have battled stuff like this. This is a 12-inch main break on 53rd Street. We average about eight boil water advisors a year. A boil water advisor, if you haven't had one, is, when we drop the pressure boiler to 20 PSI, we're required to test that water. Takes about two or three days. During that time, the customer has to boil their water for hygiene and cooking purposes and household use. So, a lot of times, these guys will, to try to avoid that, they will try to put the repair band on, you know, when it's under full pressure. Give them a lot of credit. It seems like, you know, summertime would be great, you know, you didn't wet, I guess, but the pressure's just so high, it's really dangerous here. We're talking anywhere from 70 to 110 pounds. So, it is a dangerous, dangerous job to do. And like I said, give them credit, they work very hard, and the problem is, you see, 104 main breaks a year, so we see several of those a year. This is another one that is pretty frequent fire for us. This is by Central Services. I personally, since I've been here in eight or nine years, have seen this same break, looks just like this, four times. But our records show that we've had 20 breaks on this main since 2005. So, that's pretty normal for us, too. A lot of those are two-inch mains, like I said, but we do get these larger ones like this, and unfortunately, these usually happen two o'clock in the morning and sort of blow up, not when it's super sunny and warm out. So, all these are tough picks. I just video bid, too, so I can show you. This looks like a big fountain. Some are a project, oh, I guess this is, I'll move on to the next group that's going to talk about our ARPA projects and TIF projects, and the projects that are going to be funded by the rate case. I'm going to turn to some of the other engineers. Laura Young, Purdy and Associates.
Good evening. My name's Laura Young. I'm an engineer with Purdy and Associates, and our team has had the privilege of working at City Vander's and Water Department back into the 1980s. And so, we have a good amount of experience. I personally worked with the Anderson Water Department for over 20 years. So, we appreciate the opportunity to serve the city, and I'd like to talk with you, you know, from an engineering perspective, about some of the projects and how we have, Neil's done a great job of explaining needs. I'll follow up on that a little bit, but also want to add, and, you know, how we're looking at funding these projects, trying to pair funding sources to the best advantage for the city of Anderson. So, as was mentioned, the ARPA and TIF funds are being used for projects that are currently going to bid, and that includes the, excuse me, the polar wells. So, there's two new wells up on the north end that will pump water to the Lafayette Water Treatment Plant. The expansion of the water treatment plant is also going to be going into construction next year. And then the two water transmission main projects, it's really one continuous transmission main that will go from the Lafayette Water Treatment Plant to Cross Street. That's a totally new transmission main that will provide a redundant feed, a secondary feed from the Lafayette Plant to the city's distribution system. The second part of that distribution system project goes from Cross Street down Row Mine all the way to 8th Street. That's replacing that 18-inch water main that Neil referred to, that has been a chronic problem with failures, and, you know, an 18-inch lines, it is a major transmission main in the system. So, these two projects, this overall water transmission main project, will really help with resiliency, redundancy in service, and improve flow, and allows the city to maximize the value of that Lafayette Plant, the expansions in the wellfield. So, those are all proposed to be funded through the combination of the ARPA and TIF funds, not included in the rate increase. So, then, we go ahead and look at the projects that would be included in the bond issue. And as we look at those, a lot of this, again, our goal is to try and pair the funding that would be most advantageous to the city. And so, we're And so we're looking at the state revolving fund loan program. And some regulations that have really come into effect over the last couple of years are the lead service line replacement requirements. And also with the emerging contaminants, the forever chemicals, as Neil mentioned, there are opportunities for advantageous funding through those. So in looking at, as Neil reported, all those line breaks, the service line leaks, the water main leaks. We looked at the data across the city, we talked to the operations team. We looked at areas which have the highest likelihood for lead service lines. And also Jill talked a little bit about that lead service line investigation that's recently completed. But these neighborhoods that you see have been identified for these projects. And then the other area that is beneficial as we pursue funding is the disadvantaged communities that Jill talked about as well. So there's kind of three, those three, the disadvantaged communities, the emerging contaminants and the lead service line, those are all areas that the state revolving fund has opportunities for better funding packages. Now, we don't know until we're at the process of actually bidding and moving forward projects how exactly what that package will look like. However, we know that those are the areas that are most likely to receive that beneficial funding. So these projects that we're looking at are replacing a lot of these two-inch galvanized water mains that are ongoing leak problems, replacing a lot of service lines from the water main to the water meter. And then from there, also looking at where there are galvanized service lines from the meter to the house in these project areas, that those could also be replaced as part of this project from the end. Then the, the other major project included in this funding is the, a new south-side water treatment plant. And as Neil mentioned, the city's been working really hard in recent years to identify new water resources on the south side of the city. While we're making the improvements at the Lafayette Plant, the city's had traditionally two treatment plants. And it's really desirable to have a second source of water for the city. And so the south-side plant is what we're looking at. And there's been a lot of test drilling, there's been a new production well, a test production well. And so that effort is, is, we're getting close to having that final well locations and plant site that could be developed to replace the Wheeler Plant. So of course, with the goal of more reliable new wells, better water quality and sustainable water supply and service to the community. I'm going to introduce Jill Curry, project manager and funding specialist with Curry and Associates. Additionally, I'll provide some information.
Good evening, Jill Curry, as she mentioned, so Jill Curry, Jill Curry. So as Lori mentioned, a bulk of the funding that will be through the bond will be for these water line and service line replacements throughout the city. So these, so these neighborhoods that we have listed up here on the slide are the neighborhoods that were identified by the water department staff as those where they have had the most leaks and the most issues. And we also actually mapped out all the leaks we've had over the last five years. And so these areas, these neighborhoods are the areas with the most problematic leaks. And then also where they have identified the most lead service lines or those galvanized service lines that have a short piece of lead attached to them called a lead connector or a lead gooseneck. So as we were going through putting these projects together in the engineering report, these are the neighborhoods that were identified. And then also, even beyond these neighborhoods, there are a few other homes in town that do have longer tens of feet of lead service lines. And those will also be replaced throughout these projects. So you can see Eighth Street, and then there's North, North Cross A, North Cross B, West Central. We have a map coming up here in a second. Park Place, Belmont, Brentwood, Indian Meadows, and then the Historic District. And then, like I said, there are other homes scattered throughout the city that will also have new service lines at your home. So you can see on the slide, we've got the map providing the highlighted areas and the highlighted neighborhoods for this water line and service line replacement. We are proposing about 3,300 service lines to be replaced. These are some of your oldest service lines. And like I said, some of those service lines that either have the lead service lines or the galvanized service lines with that short section of lead pipe called a connector. There will be about 20 miles of water main. And I want to point out that some of the most problematic water main in the city is a smaller two-inch diameter galvanized line. Whereas you've seen some of Neil's photos, those servant, those two-inch lines have all of that corrosion to that. And so those two-inch lines are really what we also want to focus on with this project because that's where you're getting a lot of your water loss and just a lot of your problems throughout the system. So that's 15.3 miles of two-inch mains that we're proposing to replace. So again, through the state revolving fund, so as Lori said, in order of these, it's important to pass these ordinances in order to, for us to be able to apply for funding. And that could include any forgivable loan or grant through the state revolving fund. SRF is the acronym. So SRF has the bipartisan infrastructure law funding that Congress passed a couple of years ago. All of that funding through the EPA is passed through the Indiana SRF. So Indiana SRF is our best opportunity for additional grant and for potentially even some forgivable loan to fund these projects. One of the criteria that they look at is whether or not the city of Anderson is a disadvantaged community. And you are. Citywide, your low to moderate income level, or your median household income, I should say, is $44,974, which is below the state's 50, about $53,000 level, which they determine to be anything lower than that as a disadvantaged community. In particular, I also looked at your census tracts. And you can see on the map up there, the grayed area, the grayer areas are the ones that have the lower than $53,000 census tracts as well. So most of the projects we're gonna be looking at are in areas that not only are in a city that's a disadvantaged city, but also in a census tract that is also a disadvantaged census tract. And again, these are our neighborhoods that are causing the water department the most difficulty as far as leaks and then those two-inch lines that are the problematic. So what did we do in order to start investigating where we have these lead service lines? The city applied for and received a grant from the SRF or the Indiana Finance Authority, a $400,000 grant to buy a vacuum excavation truck, which allowed them to complete pot-holing on either side of the water meter to determine if the materials at various homes around the city were lead service lines. We also went, sent a survey out to all customers, all active customers, and we put door hangers out at over 6,000 addresses, trying to encourage customers themselves to go to their crawl space, well, most probably didn't go to their crawl space, go to their basement. And if they had a crawl space, we were typically trying to do investigations there at the meter pit because that's a little bit more of a difficult place to look. But we tried to encourage people, if they saw in their basement that they had lead service line, to report it to us. We also, ourselves, went and investigated at over 5,500 houses. So we did not find a lot of longer lead service lines, but we do know there's a lot of those shorter sections of lead pipe known as connectors. So that is both what I wanted to talk about, the need for the water mains and service lines. Now I do want to talk about, as Neil referenced, the need for replacing the water plant, which is the other big part of this bond issuance, is the, a new water plant on the south side of the city. The Wheeler Plant, 75-year-old Wheeler Plant, is also now under this five-year timeline for us to comply with what are these called, these forever chemicals or PFAS. So you can see, it's, you know, not only are they already, they have special processes at the Wheeler Plant for the groundwater under the influence, but now this PFAS would require additional work at Wheeler Plant, which is already aged. So here on the next slide, it's hard to see, but this table at the top of the slide is actually directly from the Indiana Department of Environmental Management's website. And it shows that your testing results at the Wheeler Plant, tested above those levels where the federal government has now provided that regulation to have no higher than four parts per trillion of this PFAS in your water. So we are gonna need to, over the next five years, actually, it's already four and a half at this point because April was when those regulations went into place. So we have four and a half years now to fully comply with that regulation. And you'll see our timeline here shortly, we need to start working now to kind of meet that timeline. So, so timeline, we are looking at, basically, it would be, and Jennifer will talk further about the rate fa- rate increase phasing, but the construction phasing specifically would be a three-phase construction timeline. We need that IURC approval, that very first row there of summer of 2025, we need to have this IURC approval from these ordinances we pass in order to be able to then meet a timeline where we can open bids for our first project in August of 2025, which is, that first project would be these water mains and service lines. So that would be, it's about $35 million in that first phase for water mains and service lines. The second phase then would be an additional construction project that would bid in August of 2026. And then that would also then include the water plant, plus some additional water mains and service lines. And then the last construction phase would be August of 2027 bid, which would be the final portions of water mains and service lines. So it would be quite a bit of construction then over those, that timeframe. And completing construction, you see the final phase of construction actually wouldn't be complete until the spring of 2029. So quite a bit of, of work over several years. And then project costs, we have the construction, in particular, related to the construction, which is what we wanted to talk about. You can see the 2025 bond would have that $35 million in water mains, nothing for the plant at that time. Non-construction costs for a total of just over $46 million. 2026 bond, which includes the water plant and wells, it's not just the plant, it's also wells, so an additional well field to support that plant, et cetera, transmission mains. That would be $10 million in water mains and service lines, about $25 million for the water plant wells, transmission. And then non-construction for a total of $39 million. And then the last construction phase, you can see, is primarily water mains. And then non-construction for a smaller phase, about $27 million. Total construction, non-construction, $113 million. But you'll note, there's a footnote down there, because of the long, it's gonna be here over three, four years, we have contingency in the project. And they'll be able to address, you know, some of, but we do have contingency built in just with unknown inflation, unknown possible utility conflicts we might run into while we design the projects. We've tried to estimate as best we can at this point, but there is contingency built into this, this bond amount. And then note that this table here does not include the money that the city is already investing in those projects that Lori mentioned, the ARPA and the Tiff money, that's already going to address that 18-inch water main that has so many leaking problems, et cetera. And last but not least, again, I believe Jennifer will speak to this, but part of the rate increase will also include being able to support the water utility with their annual extensions and replacements they need to be having for, for operations. So within this rate increase, there's gonna be about $2.842 million by the last rate increase. The, the water department will have an additional $2.8 million a year in order to do things like replace water meters. And as you know, your water meters are your cash register to make sure that you're measuring your water sold accurately. Hydro geological investigations. With wells aging as they do, we need to continually be doing hydro geological investigations to continually replace our wells as the water utility continues. Water main and service line replacement, even though we're addressing a lot with this, with these projects, there's still so many other services in the city that will need to be replaced over time. And then in the service, the fleet vehicles that the water department will need will also need to be addressed with this rate increase and support the water utility for the future.
There we go, alright, thank you. Hi, I'm Jennifer Wilson with Crowe, and we're your municipal advisor. And what we did was prepare an analysis, and you, you should have a copy of that report. And I'm gonna give you the highlights here. This shows the report methodology. What we do is we take 2021 through 2023, and we look at those, and then we make adjustments for what we think is happening in 2024. And then we come up with what's called your revenue requirements. And that includes your operation and maintenance and taxes, your debt payments. We look at what your fund balances are, make sure that they're in compliance with your bond ordinances. And then we estimate what your annual funding will be in extensions and replacements. Neil, Lori and Jill really talked about a lot of the key considerations here, but there's, there's a lot of projects that need to be done. They talked about the $28 million of Tiff and ARPA funding that's gonna be paying for a lot of your projects here in the upcoming year. And then in the bond ordinance, we have $130 million that, that will be authorized and that will be funding the bond issuances that Jill and Lori just talked about, that we'd be doing in 2025, 26 and 27. And then we're gonna be building up the extensions and replacements. You'll see later, as I show you the revenue requirements, that we're, we're trying to phase this in 120%, 121% rate increase over four years and a half. So I try to phase it in about 30% each phase, with phase one and phase two being kind of a one combined phase. So we are building up the extensions and replacements, about $1 million per year as we're bringing on these bond issuances. And then once the bond issuances are fully on, in the final phase, we build it up to $2.8 million that you would fund, or have the ability to fund capital improvements at $2.8 million. The income statement highlights include showing what happened over 2021, 2022 and 2023. The line that's in blue is your revenue line, and the line in yellow is in, is your expenses. So you can see in 2021 that your revenues exceeded your expenses, and those expenses was operating expenses and your debt service expenses. So you had about $1.2 million, that gap between the two, available for funding capital improvements. You can see in 2022, that gap was shortened considerably, considerably, that you pretty much only had $7,000 coming from revenue that year. You just barely had enough money that came in from revenue to make all your operating expenses and your debt service for that year. In 2023, it went the opposite way, that you're eating into your fund balances to make operating expenses and your debt service payments. We made adjustments to the test year for salaries and wages and for those other employee costs associated with those salaries and wages increases. We made increases to the contribution and move taxes, and made other adjustments to normalize the test year. I like looking at this sheet, it shows what the adjusted operation and maintenance expenses are in comparison to all your operating expenses. So the big blue has to do with employees, salaries and wages and benefits. So about 53% of your expenses have to do with employee expenses. And then it fills out also with contractual services, 14, purchase power, eight. But it gives a good idea that 53% of your expenses are kind of set in stone already with salaries and wages and benefits. Lori, Jill and Neil explained to you what the capital improvement plan is going to be. The big light blue is what we're trying to bond fund. So we, about $130 million of that is the bond funding. $28.1 million is what you're paying for with ARPA and Tiff in the next year. And then we're building up over that four and a half years, $5.8 million to be able to fund your capital improvements with cash coming in each year. The yellow line right here, this is your debt service. And so we've tried to phase in all the debt service over time. But you can see right now, your debt service is a little bit over a million at $1.3 million, and it grows to a total of $8.6 million by the time we've issued that last bond. Now, a lot of those bonds, about $70 million of those bonds, we're trying to do through SRF using a 35-year payback time period. So these bonds would be outstanding for 35 years, and the plant would be outstanding for 20 years. And that goes along with the life of what your, the assets that you're actually building. This is the revenue requirements that we're increasing by year. So as I talked about, we're trying to do about 30% of the rate increase. That would be phase one and phase two kind of combined. It's making up that difference that you don't have the money right now to make your debt service payments and your operating expenses. And then in phase three, we start adding in the debt service for the first bond and the second bond. And phase four and five, we keep adding more bond issuances and increasing that amount they're going to pay for extensions or replacements in cash. So in the end, this is your revenue requirements in phase five. You have a total of $24.2 million that you're needing in phase five. Current revenues right now are $11 million. So you have a deficit of $13 million that you need to build up. That's 121% revenue increase. And it explains there on the right how we're building that up over that time period, about $3 million in phase one and two, 3.5 in phase three, 3.5 in phase four, and a little bit over $3 million in phase five. We also looked at your non-recurring charges, and those have not been adjusted since 2006. And so we're planning on also included in this rate ordinance is changing those. As they can be seen here, the bad check charge would be increasing from $30 to $49. The reconnect charges and the water tax would also increase. We're also looking at invoking or implementing the system development charge. And there's two ways of calculating that. The two ways of doing it comes up with either 1290 is the first option, or 518. So we've averaged that, so we're proposing a $900 system development charge fee. And that would be for new residents hooking up to the system to buy into the system for what's already been established and built up in the system. And that's everything from my presentation. Now, what I do for you is prepare the revenue requirements, which tells you the size of the pie that you need to have. You also hired a cost of service study expert, his name's Mark, presenting his report. What they do, I prepare what size of pie you have. What he does is divide that pie on which customer class will pay for that pie, piece of pie. All right. So when he is putting together, looking at what customer class to be paying for items, the second column over, you can see it says revenues, projected revenue, that's really current revenues. You're bringing in about $10.8 million from residential classes, the residential, commercial, industrial, and fire protection. And what it's doing is that you're currently bringing in $10.8 million, close to $10.9 million, and you need to build it to $24.1 million of revenues coming in from those classes. So what he does is redesign where those, who's getting, in his design of the rates, he designs who is going to be paying for those services. So for example, right now, you can see residential sales is paying about $6.9 million. That's about 63% of the total revenues there. At the end of the cost of service, the residential class will be paying $12.6 million, which is about 52% of the pie. So the actual amount that the residential class will be paying for is reducing compared to the other classes. So industrial sales are at $1.4 million, they're growing to $5.4. They're currently at 14% of the pie that, of the revenues that are being paid. They're going to grow to 22% of the revenues that are being paid. He does this in both the rate design of the commodity cost and the facilities charge. So commodity cost has to do with the volumetric rate. And so you can see here that the residential sales, commercial sales, industrial sales are all in the range of 5.5 to 5.71. You'll see here in a moment that we're going to be building the rate to be 5.74. 5.74, no matter how much you use. Right now, you have a declining rate block, so that the lower users pay a certain amount, and then the users that use a lot more are paying less per unit charge. We're going to one rate block by the fixed charge. He also allocates the expenses to create what's the base charge. So right now, you guys are a minimum charge community, which means you get 300 cubic feet in each minimum bill. We're going to go to, you're going to pay a base bill no matter what, and then any volumetric usage that you use on top of it is added onto that. This is where you can see where that fixed charge goes from minimum charges to now it's going to be a customer charge per bill. So for example, a 5-inch meter, a minimum charge before is $16.66, and eventually it will be going to $11.60, and then to $14, and then any additional consumption will be on top of that fee. This is the rate design. As I discussed, your current rates, you have a declining rate block. So your first 500 cubic feet's at $4.17, and then a user that's using over 1,100 cubic feet's only paying $1.54 per additional unit. That's all going to change, so that you can see it wraps into, by phase three, everyone's paying the same rate per unit charge, no matter how much you use. And then it increases to $5.74 by the phase five rate increase. What's that mean to your residential users that are typically the 5-inch meters? You can see the item that's highlighted there, which is 500 cubic feet. They would see their current bill is about $23.50, and they would increase $5.92 immediately as soon as we get the order, another $0.89 in January, and then $5 the next phase, which is the next January, and then $5.42 the next January, and then $4.78 the following. So it's an increase of $22.09, which is 92% greater than what they're paying now. So most of residential customers will see about 100% rate increase over the five-year, five phases in of the rates. It's shifting the cost to commercial and industrial rate impacts. So you remember from my report, I said the overall revenue impact we need is 121%. We're seeing that a lot of the residential and the lower rate blocks are hitting about 100%. So they're not seeing the full rate increase. That means the larger meters or the larger users are going to be taking over a higher rate increase. So at 1-inch meter, they're seeing about 148% rate increase. 2-inch meter may be 177% rate increase. And then the large customers at 260% rate increase. And then this just rolls it out by meter size. So again, a lot of the residential users will be at the 5-inch, 3/4-inch meters, and then your larger meters are 8-inch and 12-inch meters. And this allocates or shows you what the percentages are with the overall increases by adjustment, by phases, phased in over year one through year five. And that comes to the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to entertain any questions or other people up there.
First of all, please give Mr. Scott my best regards. He's a terrific guy. A couple of questions. With the increasing assets of the water utility, your capital improvements, how would you then measure the contributions of new taxes?
Right. So the contribution and move taxes could increase as you're bringing on more assets. What we do when we're calculating the contribution and move taxes is calculate the maximum amount. And during this five-phase rate increase, we are maintaining at one amount and not showing an increase. So as you're bringing on more assets, we'll be able to justify a higher contribution of move taxes. But right now, we're not trying to implement that in this rate increase. So that will just be a decision that's made over that five years. As those assets come online, do you want to take in more taxes to fund to the general fund?
Is there any part of this program that you see that, where we're searching and attracting for new customers already in some of the city, Anderson, in other words, people that are living here that are not on city walk? Is any part of this program geared towards that possibility?
I'm going to have to turn to the engineers, Neil.
So there were really, the project is, all the bond funders projects are replacement of existing infrastructure, water mains within existing neighborhoods. So those projects are all really aimed at serving those customers that are already served by replacing their infrastructure. Now, the proposed treatment plant on the south side, you know, could potentially serve additional, you know, it provides capacity for cities to serve additional, but we're not specific the way you're looking for that.
Thank you. So with the remedy prohibition against refinancing the bonds, if we get into a period of time where rates are lower, would we be allowed to do that?
Yeah, you would be able to do that after 10 years. So the 35-year bonds could be refinanced in 10 years, and so could 20-year bonds.
And the last question is, we're going to be replacing the old Johnson control meters, right? Will we end up, how many of those would we replace, Neil? All of them? Is that part of the program?
Yes, the meter change program is part of this rate case. We will change, we'll do it over a 10-year period, 23,000 meters over 10 years. And yes, every meter will get replaced.
A couple for me. We replacing all the meter pits or just the meters on this residential? Bring in the lines.
You're asking about when we replace the meter services? Are we doing the pits too?
Yeah.
Yes, they will be renewed. We will do up to the meter pit. However, if it's a full service line, I'll make sure these guys answer to it. But I believe we will have to go to the house as well on all full lead service line.
So we may see these costs off, you know, example, I want my driveway, you know, do we have the money in there to go, I got to replace driveway, your shrubs, all your landscaping for all these houses? I just want to make sure that we're not, we don't do this and then...
Yes, yes. Yeah, they're difficult projects. They truly are. So the funding specifically has very specific requirements with respect to state revolving fund and service lines. And if it is a galvanized service line with a lead connector, it qualifies and must be replaced all the way to the premise plumbing of the house. And yes, we have estimated high numbers for those service line replacements, and assume that they all will need to be replaced through the project because it is very costly and the regulations are very challenging, you know, with respect to having to go all the way to the premise plumbing, which is defined as the house. So with the projects that you saw on the map of those neighborhoods where we're replacing service lines, every service line will be replaced from the new water main to water meter. We'll be replacing that water meter pits, et cetera, and everything. And then the ones that are considered a needed replacement, it's galvanized from that meter to the house, it will be replaced with the project. And that's an essential part of how we qualify for the funding.
So no additional cost to homeowner because they have to replace their line?
Correct.
Speak up.
I know in the past, this was a question I asked the other day, and that was, it tears up a yard, and then, oh, we're done, and then they did do their job. But you said in response to that, you talked about that, what will happen over the year?
Sure. Yes. So when these projects are finished, the contractor will be held to a one-year warranty on the work of the construction and after construction. They will be required to do a video prior, video after, so they'll know exactly what it looked like. But we also will have a three-year maintenance bond on all those projects. So, you know, we did this in 2016 when we did the new addition with the last rate increase that we did. It's 20,000 feet of pipe, tight, houses are tight. Yeah, we had to call the contractor back many times to come back and redo lawns, driveways, concrete driveways, those kind of things. And they were a pretty good contractor, worked with us well. I think they did a really good job. Didn't have a whole lot of complaints. So we'll do the same thing with all these projects as well. These projects will be way over scope for what they have. These guys do a terrific job. We just don't have the equipment to do it at that scale.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Is the 10-year construction period a 35-year bond?
We're looking at construction over about five years. So the bond, there's two series. There would be a series that would be a 20-year. So with the state revolving fund, they do typically 20-year bond issue for water treatment plants and wells. Pipe in the ground, they will extend up to 35 years. And so that's the way that Jennifer has calculated that, to keep the rates as low as possible, to extend that. And what she was saying was it kind of matches the age, you know, pipe in the ground should have a life beyond 35 years. You don't want to time that repayment with something that you're still paying for 35 years, but it's no longer any good. So that's why they like to keep the plan, everything else, they like to keep it at a 20-year term.
Yes, that's what I was trying to say, 20 years. One more question. In some places in the city, we have rightaways that run to the middle of the road, okay, in our older neighborhoods, you know, the northern chase, up close to downtown. So if they tear the street up, that will be covered in the cost of the project?
Yes, absolutely. All the road pavement restoration, yard restoration, all restoration has to be included in the project, in the fund, you know, cost estimates you see.
If there is a fence or something in that rightaway, you got to technically have a ownership in the rightaway, probably going to replace that. I have a project on the wall that just happened, so I'm sure it is...
Yeah, I think we'll work to try and replace those fences if at all possible. And those can be kind of a sensitive issue, and certainly try and work around those and keep it restored and community property owners and so forth.
2580, that's the new water tap fee. Is that just the residential water tap fee? Is that different for the storm let's of the...
Yeah, that's the minimum fee. So for regular residential, it's 2580, and then whatever additional cost it might be to service a larger line, that fee will increase.
Is it percentage based on that? I'm asking, so storm let's is too much like, you have to adjust that part. That should be paid $45,000 for a tap fee? So I didn't know if, how are we going to adjust the rate? And you aren't going to get for the commercial side side of these businesses?
I worked in Neve'sville area for E&amp;A before you, so I know exactly what you're talking about. And Jennifer did, part of her presentation was the added system development charge. That's what you're talking about. A regular connection fee is, is what does it cost you to actually run a tap, run the service line? The system development charge is really, you're buying in capacity for whatever your business is and how much it uses over time. So what she described is what we would do too, if you know what I mean, which is, you know, if it's a large user, then they should pay their way ahead of what you, they should pay for capacity that they're gonna use for the day that they're here forward. So, yeah, that's where that comes from, every utility's charging around us, so it's time we did a thing.
Just to follow back up, yeah, so the nine-hundred, so the system development charge, that is nine-hundred for a five-inch meter, and then it does graduate according to Mark's UFS's capacity of that line. So yeah, it is higher for larger meters.
Any questions from us?
Questions from council? Okay, so questions from the audience?
Oh, yeah.